Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start the meeting now. Unfortunately, the Board President and the Board Vice President are not able to be here this evening. And as a result, pursuant to by law 0164, the Board members who are present are going to select someone from amongst themselves to run this evening's meeting, preside over this evening's meeting. The only requirement is that the individual must receive a plurality of votes from the Board members who are here. So with that, Mr. Grillo, did you want to?
Yeah, I take a motion to have Ms. Lizinski to chair the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Ricks second. Mr. Hastings?
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski? Dr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Remmy? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Alsby? Ms. Cook? Motion carries.
Good evening, everybody. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4-6, P.O. 1975, C. 231, S. 1 amended 2006, C. 70, S. 2, the Asbury Park Department of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of time, date, location, to the extent known the agenda of the meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the new coaster on January 11th, 2023 via email. Copies of this notice have been placed in the administrative building, Bolton Board District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 11th, 2023. Our mission statement, the Asbury Park School District, will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Mr. Hastings, enroll, please.
Mr. Grillo? Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Dr. Kenneth?
Here.
Mr. Remmy? Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Saunders? Ms. Alsby? Ms. Cook?
Please stand for the flag salute. Dr. Adams, are we going to do the presentation now, or do you want to?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right, I'm glad to see everyone coming out this evening. We have several presentations that we're going to do. As you know, each month, we recognize our student and staff of the month. But before we do that, we also have a presentation. But this month is Board Recognition Month, so we want to recognize our Board of Education members first. As you see, there's a token of appreciation, a cactus in front of you, courtesy of your superintendent and executive staff here at Asbury Park and the administration and the students and staff as well. It's a small token of appreciation for your voluntary service on behalf of this community. So what we're going to do preceding that acknowledgement is do our schools' students first. So we're going to start with Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, Principal Schultz.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is my delight, as the principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, to welcome our Student of the Month for this month, Ms. Lysai Whitaker. Ms. Lysai Whitaker is one of our preschool students in Ms. Christina and Ms. Laurie's class. And when I tell you, do not let her three-year-old age fool you. She is a model student at our school. She is, has quickly become a leader in her preschool classroom. She assists her other students. She has been nominated for Student of the Month several times this year already, and she's always willing to have a positive attitude and really showcase our Thurgood School positively. And she is a repeated PBIS ticket winner weekly, I must say. We are joined here by our family, our third-grade brother, who also attends Thurgood Marshall, Devon, and her sister Kylie, who is a former Thurgood student, now at MLK Upper Elementary School in fourth grade. And Lysai, here you go, some of your favorite things. That's heavy, baby. And again, on behalf of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, it is an absolute pleasure to introduce our Thurgood Staff of the Month, Nurse Elizabeth Fendler. Nurse Fendler has joined our Thurgood community this year as our school nurse, and her colleagues nominated her multiple times this month, citing her positive approach to students, her nurturing attitude with all in our school, her absolute clear organization and willingness to serve our school and that of the entire district when, where, and as needed. Nurse Liz, we appreciate you so much. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz. Next, we'll have Ms. Thea Jackson-Bayers, principal of Bradley Elementary School, the proud, proud, proud principal of Bradley Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, it is an honor and privilege to congratulate your Ritzy Olivera Perez as the Bradley Elementary School January Staff Student of the Month. Come on up, baby. Come on up, our parents, come on up, come on up, come on up. At this time, I have your Ritzy's teacher is here, and she just wanted to have a couple words about her. Give her a round of applause. And the whole family's up.
Your Ritzy, you are a wonderful, hard-working student. We are so proud of you, Ms. Lee and I. You're always so kind to your classmates, to the staff in the building, and you're just an all-around wonderful student. And we really, you're fantastic. Thank you so much.
So, your Ritzy, of course, in true Bradley fashion, we have some Bradley Elementary School spirit for her. And Mom and Dad, do you mind ramming Bradley Elementary School and saying, "I'm the proud, proud, proud parent of Bradley Elementary School"? This is for you. And Mom, thank you. Without you, we would not have this baby, your Ritzy. These are for you. For the Bradley Elementary... At this time, the Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month, Mr. Chris O'Donnell. Give him a round of applause. When I tell you, when I tell you he is a pleasure, the way he is with the students, he loves them, they love him. So, Mr. Chris, this is for you. This is a little token. Now, Mr. Chris, a little birdie told me that tonight, your wife and mom were supposed to come with you tonight. Because, so please give this to them. We said for them to deal with you, they deserve their flowers. So please give this to wife and your mom. And Mr. Chris, starting tomorrow, you can park in my parking space.
Congratulations. Next, our high school principal, Ms. O'Neill.
Good evening. I am Bridgette O'Neill. I am the principal of Asbury Park High School. We're recognizing two students tonight. First, we are going to recognize our seventh and eighth-grade student. Michael Andrade is our Student of the Month. She is someone who is excited to come to school every single day. She's always in uniform. She always has a big smile on her face. She is a proud, proud Blue Bishop and is in our chorus program. She just had her first performance two weeks ago. She's worked hard this year and is excelling with her I Ready, often going to see Ms. Hayes-Schneider, one of her teachers, to work on her math and try to move herself forward. She's not here tonight, but if we could give her a round of applause. Our second student that we're recognizing is one of our high school students, Ziamara Katus, who is in 11th grade. She was nominated by her music teacher, Mr. Marky. She's been relentless in her work ethic on the piano and is taking charge of learning very challenging pieces. She's currently working on Beethoven's Sonata 17, the Tempest, third movement in D minor. She is aiming to attend Montclair State University as a classical piano major. She's a member of our Dream Academy and is also just absolutely excelling academically. So a big round of applause for Ziamara as well. Ziamara's going to come up. She's here tonight for her parents. I'm also going to recognize my Staff Member of the Month as well. Sabrina Grasso is one of our math teachers at the high school. This year, she has a challenging schedule ahead of us. She's being recognized for her instructional excellence. She's been observed this cycle and had many walkthroughs. She's always on point, always doing station activities. Her students are incredibly engaged. She teaches our ELL math classes as well as precal honors. So she has students all over the spectrum and has taken huge initiative to support the language needs of students in advanced math classes. So shout out to Ms. Grasso, who's also here, not here this evening, but recognizing her for the high school. Okay, we're going to read Michael's again, because Michael just came with her family. This is Michael. So this is Michael. We are recognizing Michael for her excitement and pride as a Blue Bishop. She comes to school every day in her uniform. She's always excited, with a big smile on her face, as you can see. She is proud to be a Blue Bishop and is part of our chorus program. She's worked really hard this year and is excelling with her I Ready, often going to see Ms. Hayes-Schneider all on her own to continue to practice her math. So congratulations.
So we have Ms. Hope Walker, who's going to be, Hope Walk, excuse me, who's going to be here presenting for Martin Luther King Upper Elementary. Mr. Medina is at Textbook, where we have several staff presenting. So come on up, Ms. Hope Walk. We'll do the staff and the student for Martin Luther King Upper Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Hope Walk, I'm the reading specialist at MLK. The Student of the Month was picked by his peers as well as the staff members of the sixth-grade team. So well-deserved. I actually just met him just recently, and you're a hoot. You're such a sweet young man. But there were some really nice words that Mr. Medina wanted me to say to you. Alan is an excellent student. He's a great average. Alan is an excellent student at MLK. He has a grade point average with an A. As previous Students of the Month, Alan is focused and he's driven. He excels in all of his classes, highly regarded by his teachers and his peers. And at MLK, we are all so proud of you and honored to have him as a student at MLK. We would like to thank his family for all this support, the effort, and around the development of Alan. And congratulations from Mr. Medina and the MLK staff. Mom, Dad, want to come up, take a picture? Alan, on behalf of MLK, Mr. Medina and our staff would like to give you a bunch of goodies, MLK gear. Thank you, sweetheart. Congrats, Mom. Well, this is so well-deserved. The MLK Staff Member of the Month is other known as Ms. Cassandra Marshall. Please come on up. Cassandra is part of our CST team at MLK, as well as Thurgood Marshall. Come on up, my beautiful. She's a valuable member of the school's operations team. Ms. Marshall, her commitment to her students and to the school is unwavering, often going beyond basic expectations. No matter what the challenge, Ms. Marshall is willing and ready to contribute. Her insight, her knowledge is top-tier, and we are so fortunate in this district to have her as part of our MLK family as well as Thurgood. Want to congratulate Ms. Marshall for a very well-deserved recognition. We love you. Thanks, Al. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. On behalf of all of the staff, the leadership of those particular buildings, MLK, the high school, Bradley, and Thurgood, to the students, we have several students that are picked, but we picked one for a Student of the Month that's recognized at the board meeting. Now we will move into our presentation, Mr. Ruiz, who's going to do a presentation on the Start Strong Assessment results.
All right, good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Edwin Ruiz. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for the Asbury Park School District. Welcome again. My presentation today is regarding our New Jersey Start Strong Assessment that's taken by every student in New Jersey at the beginning of the school year. For a little context, this exam or this assessment was provided to the state when we were in the pandemic and we were not doing the state, the end-of-year state testing. So as part of New Jersey's push to kind of see where students are, they have created an assessment that, let me just go to the next slide. They created an assessment for us to see where our students stand, okay? Couple of big things that you should know about the Start Strong Assessment in the fall is to be used as a standards-based complement and a resource for educators in the classroom. It replaced in 20, it does not replace the standardized benchmark that we use that's already in place, and it does not replace the Spring 2023 New Jersey Student Learning Standards, better known as NJSLA. Clicker's not working, that's okay, we just push on. All right. The test is basically a subset of prioritized standards from the prior academic year. So for instance, if you're a fifth grader, the standards used were fourth-grade standards. If you were an Algebra I student, they use the eighth-grade learning standards for Algebra students. These are released items from the NJAS, I mean, excuse me, from the NJSLA. Test took about 45 to 60 minutes, depending. It was very, like I said, a subset of information, so it could be done in one sitting. And then if you read the note, basically it tells you that this is not an assessment that you want to use to compare how students did in NJSLA. This is more of an assessment that we use to kind of gauge where our students are at the beginning of the year so we can provide support. Here, so we can provide support. Okay, now what you're seeing in this first slide, and what's important for you guys to notice, okay, it's working now. What's important for you guys to notice about this slide is how it's set up. So there's three areas that you want to look at. Students need strong support, students need some support, students need less support. On the side here, you see the grade levels. The bottom tells you all the grades. Tells you the number of students tested per grade level, the total number at the bottom, and you can kind of see how it goes across. And then every subsequent slide that follows will show it in a graphic form. Okay? Here's that same information in a graph. Okay? What we want to see is more green than red. And as you can tell, this is where we are. There's a highlight here I'd like to point out. Oh, excuse me, I went back. Our ninth-grade students, as they start to progress, they're going to be a group we're going to look at as we move forward. Same information again for mathematics. Broken down again, strong, some, and less support with the grade levels and the number of students who tested. Sometimes we see a disparity in the numbers from Language Arts because some, our language learning students are exempt from Language Arts, and usually they can take the math in their native language. Okay, same information again, broken down by grade level. Same thing in science. Science, the reason you only see three grade levels is because we only test, NJSLA is tested in fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. Obviously, since we're testing previous-year standards, our sixth graders, our ninth graders, and our 12th graders took the science NJSS, or Start Strong. It's the breakdown with the total all the way at the end. Now, I'm showing just basically a breakdown by race. You see Asian, Black, Hispanic, multiple, and White. Same thing for mathematics, by race. Same thing for science. Now we move into our subgroups. And so what you've noticed here is that it's broken up by elementary, middle school students in grades six to eight, and high school students, grades nine to 12. And it's broken up by Free and Reduced 504L, which is our language learners, special ed, gen ed, and then all students in all the categories. At the bottom, it's all grades. This is the breakdown, the distribution at Language Arts. Slightly better than last year for our Free and Reduced in our Section 504s. Here is the mathematics, broken down the same way. Section 504, all the different groups, slightly better again than last year. We have Free and Reduced actually dropped 10 points in the red, which is good, and 20-point gain in green for 504 students. Gen ed went up a little. Same information for science. Some improvement with our Free and Reduced lunch students, which is the majority of our kids in Section 504. Okay, so what are some of the action steps and intervention strategies that we're going to use in Language Arts? We're going to move, we, one of the things we did this year with the work of our data specialist and our high school principal was, and of course, the support of the superintendent, we moved to all-year classes and doing A and B. So instead of semester-based, we did it, we created an A/B schedule so students can have math and Language Arts all year. Ongoing teacher instructional academies, one which you will see on this board agenda meeting. We're on our third teacher academy, coming up with, for writing. Professional development focused on our Language Arts standards, strategies, and pacing. Pacing is a big one for us because we want to make sure that we're getting those important standards early. One-on-one modeling in classrooms. We're also refocusing our instructional coaches to support teacher capacity. We're doing ongoing PLCs and CPTs, those are common planning, data-driven, with data-driven decision-making, grade-level articulation on what writing should look like, personalized writing instruction with the NJSLA rubric as a framework so our students can really do well. Use of our district resources, iExcel, iReady, HMM, so forth and so on. And then everything is connected to our district goals, something we presented earlier in the year. And similarly for mathematics, one of the big things is, again, moving to semester, but really looking at conceptual understanding. And so we're giving a lot of professional development to teach for deep conceptual understanding, which is one of the pillars the state has put out for us as part of accelerating the learning due to the pandemic. Standards-based instruction and getting those major standards, the big one, getting those major standards at the beginning of the year with support for additional standards at the end. Very important that we get to those things because if we wait till the end of the year, they would have been assessed already, and then their learning after they've been assessed. We want to get those standards out early. Pacing, again, that's a big, a big push for us to make sure we're moving along in the content. And then pre-records and skills for grade-level content is taught during a small group, and students are group-based on formal and formal assessment data. And again, we connect everything to our district goals. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Wanted to, thank you very much. I want to be very candid. Our assessment results are not stellar. Excuse me? Stellar good. Our assessment results...
Excuse me? Please? Thank you.
Let me go back and say what I started to say. The reality of the information that we are providing for transparency to the community and to our educators is we have to do better. Clearly, the results are not what we have already been discussing, that no one gets up in the morning to come and do a horrible job. Our students show up every day, and the work and the effort that they put in has to be matched by the results that they are able to produce on assessment results, but not only on assessment results, also have the opportunity to gain life employment skills that they can use later on. And so when we look at these assessment results from New Jersey Start Strong, other districts have also had their own other issues related to the standards and the other information that is assessed and the timing of the assessment. So that is a huge issue. So there are other districts that have reluctantly administered the Start Strong. However, we don't have that luxury, all right? We know that as a district, we have to try to get as much assessment information in order to improve what we are doing. Our staff are aware of the challenges that we face on assessment results. We are very clear, we are very direct, we are very explicit with the challenges that our students are having, and we are addressing that through professional development, not only in the buildings, but district-wide. We are assessing that with the support of the association. Today, we had a DEAC meeting where we looked at the evaluation scores from the first cycle and assessing the various areas in which we can improve feedback and professional development and capacity of our staff. So we're looking at this from a triage standpoint, that there is nothing off the table that we are attempting, trying, refining, correcting, removing in order to improve the outcomes for the students in this community. These test scores are not a reflection of the passion and commitment. We can't put an assessment score on that. But what we can put an assessment score on is the capacity in which our students are familiar with assessments, how they are addressing the standards, and how strong and confident they are in their understanding of the information, not only in the classroom, but also on those assessments. So there has to be some congruency between what we're producing and what we're providing instructionally in the classroom and how that's measuring up on the state assessments. That is not going to turn around in one year. That is not going to turn around in two years. But let's not be naive that we have a whole lifetime to waste on students who start in kindergarten and end up in 12th grade and are still not achieving. That is unacceptable. That is unacceptable now. It will be unacceptable tomorrow. But when we think about what we are dealing with, we're dealing with an $8.6 million deficit. We're dealing with a budget cut where we are only receiving less than half of the money that we should be receiving. We should be receiving $24 million. We haven't been getting that. But we've been making cuts to the staff, to the essential resources that would go to support students. We are actually providing instruction to our students, maybe on about a $3 million budget that's going directly to teaching and learning. So we're not comparing ourselves to our neighbors. We're not comparing ourselves to affluent districts. We have to compare ourselves to our everyday show up and do the work in order to change. to change these results. No one who works in this district is not aware of these results. Not a teacher, not a student, not a parent, and especially not this administration. But we are not satisfied with that. It is not okay for those results to be produced year in, decade in, decade out. The staff is aware of that. The leadership is aware of that. But the community also is aware of that. But when it comes time for this next budget season and we start talking about what we need for our students, understand that it is not just the voice of me at this microphone talking and advocating on behalf of our students for the financial resources that they should be getting. And it is damn sure not fair to compare us to Rumsen Fairhaven even. I don't know food poverty that happens in Rumsen Fairhaven, and that's that community. So let's be clear. I don't know one teacher in Asbury Park that doesn't come here to do their best. I don't know one administrator that shows up and says, today, I'm not going to give a damn. I don't know one student that walks to a school in this district that doesn't show up to learn. But these assessment results are not an indication of that effort and/or the direction in which we're trying to move this district. Period.
Thank you. Committee chairs, reports. The student rep, did she leave? Oh, geez, okay, she couldn't stand it. Who would like to go first? Mr. Grillo, Buildings and Grounds? You want to go?
Buildings and Grounds met on the 19th. And there was a facility use request for, well, the committee reviewed two use requests. All three-point soccer is requesting use of Bradley Elementary School gymnasium Tuesdays and Thursdays for soccer skills training, and the request fee waiver is $3,600. And they were supposed to do, they were supposed to fill out some additional paperwork, right, Mr. Hastings?
We do have all our paperwork, it's been submitted.
We have it, okay. Also, Asbury Park Little League is scheduled, a pancake breakfast for Saturday, February 4th, and the kitchen equipment will be operated by volunteer Sedexo staff. Also, if everyone can please come to that, it's a great event for the community. We all show up, and it's really a great way, great way to support the kids. Architectural services, so there were three ESER bid proposals for the elevator replacement. The committee was updated on various ESER-funded projects in the district. Phase one included upgrading HVAC systems in the high school college wing and the locker rooms, as well as replacing all the unit ventilators here at Bradley. Phase two includes the replacement of all the unit ventilators at MLK that provide both heat and air conditioning. Phase two also included the replacement of the boiler system at MLK. And the elevator at MLK has been demoed. Crane is going to be on-site the weekend, well, it was this, this past weekend to replace the equipment on the roof. And the expected project completion date for, for that is the end of March. We also spoke about central office relocation and the future use of the Barack Obama building. The district architect provided an estimate for repairs to Barack Obama related to the move of central office. They estimated $400,000 needed prior to moving in, and then another $560,000 in repairs and upgrades that could be made after the staff has already moved in. There are a couple of other ongoing projects that we spoke about. One was the high school chair lift that's been installed and inspected. The railings have been installed on the ramp outside the high school media center. Carpeting has been removed and replaced with tile at Thurgood's preschool disabled classroom. We have a new phone system upgrade that's being discussed with the IT department, and the district will begin to move forward with a radio system upgrade funded via a safety grant from our insurance carrier. And finally, we also discussed both repairing the basketball courts behind the high school and that it's assumed that it's going to be about $85,000. And we also discussed the proposed donation of benches for the soccer field outside here at Bradley Elementary. There's a couple that, that lives literally right behind the Bradley Elementary School that has offered to donate benches as well as plant trees over where the, the youth of the community use that soccer area over there, because right now there's no place for, for the kids to sit, they have to sit on the grass. And there's also no shade, so in the summertime, it can get really hot for them. I don't know, Mr. Hastings, were you able to get in touch with, with the?
I always spoke to the family there. Mr. Sosa is going to reach out to them directly as he's aware of the needs and the specifics to what can be installed for a school versus just a general.
Right. Okay, great. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Rich, you see it on?
The curriculum and instruction committee met January 17th at 5:00 PM, and we had several items on our agenda, starting with the district wishes to partner with Wellspring Center for Prevention to provide prevention and life skill program to students in grade seven to eight, starting February until December 31st, 2023, at no cost to the district. We also discussed the program that's called Asbury Park High School Physical Education Takeover Day. Mr. Braxton Whitney is the bid director for the U.S. Army Fitness Challenge, and local soldiers will take over APH as physical education class for the day at no cost to the district. We discussed the Community Affairs and Resource Center to host computer literacy classes at the Dorothy L. Magnes Parent Center. Classes will be every Tuesday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM for 12 consecutive weeks, starting February 7th of this year, at no cost to the district. And anyone who resides in Asbury Park can take part in that class. It doesn't just have to be parents. We discussed Girls on the Run of Central New Jersey Council, they received.
Excuse me, Ms. Rich. Mr. Rogers, put the light just.
Girls on the Run, Central New Jersey Council received grants from Rite Aid in an effort to support a scholarship fund for spring after-school programs at Bradley Elementary, starting March 23, and again, at no cost to the district. And this is something that I'm really happy to see on our CNI agenda, and it's the Zeta Epsilon Lamata Chapter Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated Go to High School, Go to College Program SAT and PSAT Preparation Course for the Asbury Park High School students, grades nine to 12, and those who are wishing to attend a four-year college or university. And that, again, is at no cost to the district. The Teachers Academy, we discussed that again, this is, I think, the second phase of that. Samantha Paso and Kristen Whitmar, Staff Development Workshop Incorporated, to partner with the Asbury Park School District and our Instructional Teachers Academy for the Literacy Department, to provide teachers and paraprofessionals and administrators of grades pre-K through 12 with high-quality workshop and follow-up coaching visit on a variety of timely topics. Again, as I said, this is part two, it's a continued writing, it's, it's provided through the ESAPON, this is the second part. The first part was started sometime this school year, I don't know the exact time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Penna, policy?
Madam President, I mean, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add a few other things to that. One of the things regarding CNI, wanted to really clarify some information regarding our Allied Health CTE program. We are not discontinuing our Allied Health and CTE program. We are right now providing those students with the support through, to pass the assessment as well as take the necessary tests. We will be continuing that next year, as well as right now, we are investigating the CTE program cosmetology. We have a visit to Lincoln High School in Jersey City on February 1st to visit their facility. We've had a meeting with them, I believe, Tuesday or Wednesday? No. Yeah? Tuesday? Tuesday, with their assistant superintendent over their CTE programs, and we will be taking a visit to see their facilities in order to begin to map out our addition of that program to our CTE program. We will phase out the Law and Public Safety CTE because of just student interest. The other piece that is worth noting is that Brookdale will be discontinuing in its current form next year, the program, which was the dual enrollment with all of its partner districts in Monmouth County that led to the associate's degree. The reason being, a lot of four-year schools were picking apart the degree and not issuing a full 60 credits to all of the students, no matter what district they were in that program. So Brookdale will be transitioning to a 30-credit program, which I have a meeting on the 31st with them, with other superintendents from the county to see what that program will look like. However, we've had multiple meetings with MoEs and looking at dual enrollment programs. We had a follow-up meeting today regarding that. So we're looking to provide a 30-credit program for our students, but they will, our current students who are in the Dream program will complete the associate's degree program that is presently constructed as it is with Brookdale. They will be phasing it out and transitioning to the new 30-credit program. We will be providing you with more information after the 31st because Brookdale still needs to provide much more clarity on the type of courses, whether they're going to be asynchronous or synchronous courses for our students. Our main goal is to make sure we keep our students in the cohort program, as well as they have the opportunity to have FaceTime with the professors, as well as the supports that we've put in place for the last seven cohorts, because we're actually having our first cohort of students who graduated, actually graduating from college this year. So our first cohort of Dream students, which were my eighth graders back in 2015, 2016, are now getting ready to graduate from college. So we want to make sure that we're continuing to provide those supports to those students and that program, even though it transitions. So we'll have two parallel programs with the dual enrollment, those who are presently in the current Brookdale model, and then the transition, which will be a parallel, which will be the 30-credit program at Brookdale. So I wanted to make sure that I touched on all of those issues. And I will be investigating and looking at the grade configuration that we presently have to make adjustments, looking at what may be suitable for our students and community for next school year. So those are just things that I want to say in public now as we begin to discuss those things moving forward. So I'm on public record during a board meeting saying we will be looking at investigating that transition. Okay?
Dr. Adams, I'm sorry. Yeah. First of all, has Brookdale given any indication if the 30-credit program is that, what's the end result of that? Is it still going to be for an associate's degree?
So what they will be offering is if you continue on to Brookdale, you will finish your associate's degree with them. So there are, we just had this conversation at the Monmouth County Executive Superintendent Roundtable last Friday. They rolled this out, and we were one of the first districts to actually have a meeting with them. So they're still trying to work out the, the core sequences, as well as their partner relationships and memorandums of agreement with four-year institutions in, in the state.
And what was their reason again? Because they, they were picking apart?
The receiving colleges and universities, and again, it goes back to money. If I don't have to register for your 100-level courses because I've taken them already, then I don't get that money. So it's easier for me to say, well, if that course was taught by a high school teacher or in a high school classroom or the high school staff member, then according to them, they don't have to take that credit, those credits, rather. So we're moving into looking at what this new phase is going to look like and how that's going to be suitable to our students and, and our needs.
And the other thing I was going to suggest, and you probably already had this in the works, but to have those students that are, were in that first cohort, cohort, to come back and kind of report back to us, you know, how, you know, how the program benefited them and kind of look at the, the good and the bad of it, but just to kind of, it'd be great to hear from them in terms of.
Well, I'll reach out to Ms. Wright, who is actually continuing to work with our current Dream students. Her daughter, Micah Wright, was one of our first students to graduate from the program. So I'll reach out to Ms. Wright this week and see what Micah's situation is, and we'll update the board. I know Ms. O'Neil wants to add a little bit, but I want to kind of proceed on with the meeting and answer any additional questions.
Thank you.
The allied program, nursing program, what is the actual transition going into after January? Is there a teacher and is someone overseeing that program? If the staff member isn't there?
Yes. That's the quick and dirty of it, yes. We've actually now been, we're waiting to, we have interviewed for the replacement teacher. We're looking to make sure that we can match the salary. And so there are other things right now that we are, we're waiting to ensure, but we've provided the resources and support around the students to complete their assessment in order to pass the necessary tests and, as well as the courses. So yes.
Dr. Penna? Policy? Oh, Mr. Hastings, policy.
Sure. The Policy Committee had its first meeting with our new members on the 19th. We discussed the format of the meeting and how policies are updated, the process associated with that. Policies are updated via a service throughout the state by a company called Strauss ESME. They monitor legislative and legal changes in the environment and then provide school districts with recommended and/or mandatory changes. There was an alert put out by them recently that addressed approximately 15 different policies and regulations. I would say almost all of them are mandatory changes, so those are driven, again, by changes to the law or results of court cases that, that impact these policies. So the committee has them on for the first reading. Anything that's, has to be reviewed by a curriculum or any other department that may touch some of these policies are reviewing them for input, should there be a need for changes or choices in how the policies are interpreted. The committee also moved on to other topics, including how ad hoc committees are created, and we talked about, again, our technology device program, our one-to-one program for students, and how we want to address damaged devices and how those are replaced, and if there is any cost associated with, you know, multiple accidents for. there is any cost associated with, you know, multiple accidents for any particular student.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll do athletics.
Mr. Hastings, did we, what, did we come up with a final policy for the damaged electronics yet, or is it still?
So the policy itself says that parents are ultimately responsible for replacement of the devices. Parents also sign an acceptable use form that says they're going to be used for academic purposes and those sorts of things, and not for, you know, a Facebook or other applications that are not related to the student's academic progress. What the Policy Committee is looking at is, should we decide to charge a parent for a broken screen? How much would that be? So right now in policy, devices are treated like textbooks, so they sort of create a four-level tier of replacement costs. So if it's a new device, it's full price or 100% of the cost. If it's, you know, a year-old or slightly damaged, because it was originally talking about textbooks, it's 75% of the cost, 50, and then 25. So the committee, again, is looking at the type of damage to the device, whether that's a warranted or repairable damage, much like you do with your cell phone when you drop it, and, you know, if it breaks the screen, it's not covered, but if it chips or something, they do cover it. And again, if, you know, we want to offer one pass so that a student gets one device, breaks it, doesn't get charged, but if they break a second device, the charge may be assessed. So those are the things the committee's looking at and trying to come to a fair decision about.
And what was the policy for ad hoc committees?
Policy for ad hoc committees says that board members can make that suggestion to the president, and then the president would either approve or deny the ad hoc committee and would be the person responsible for assigning members to that committee.
It also, it's my recollection that it also says that a majority of the board members could also vote to make a committee, an ad hoc committee as well.
There's a regulation on it, so it explains what has to have a purpose. It's a whole bunch of stuff, and if you review it, it has a regulation to the policy, so it kind of self-explains to me if you get a chance. I was going to do finance real quick. Mr. Gerlo covered architectural services. We went over the annual comprehensive financial report and stabilization aid, which most of the money is going to be used to upgrade science in the media center, science labs and media center. Also went over, what else? Mid-year budget review, as Dr. Adams mentions, I believe will be cut $8.5 million next year, so that's high on our list of priorities, trying to find out what we're going to do about that. And the other policy, actually other committee was athletics. And Mr. Remy, you want to go over athletics? Do you want to make a brief summary about it, or do you want me to go through?
I don't have notes in front of me, but.
You want the notes?
I don't know.
I have them right here.
Mr. Hastings, want to go over it?
No, I have it. If you, you want me to go quickly? Do you want to say anything about athletics at all, about our meeting?
No.
Okay. There is a new Instagram page for the athletic department. If you get a chance, check it out. We talked about coaching vacancies that are being posted early, try to fill them out before, you know, the week before practice starts. Community outreach, Mr. Bowers is reaching out to the senior center to try to get seniors to the games to watch the basketball or whatever game there is, and there's a lot of interest for that. Also communicating with the different organizations in town for participation. They're looking for a venue for the sports banquet, and I think that was about it. Did I miss something? That's about it? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, I have something about.
Oh, you have something? Okay, go.
All right, so basically, with the new AD, Mr. Bowers, just his vision with everything, like the way he plans on having like the football team and everything, and why he's doing what he's doing, it makes sense. Just got to see how it plays out, needs involvement from everyone to see how it really plays out. Wants to do a football program, not just a football team, you know, and get our students, our student athletes, really become student athletes, so they can, you know, like, even after they leave here, they can still go on to do good things, better things. They have more opportunities to play on a collegiate level or a higher level than just high school. That's the feeling that I got from it, and it was a good feeling, you know? I want to see how it all plays out. I'll rock with it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Madam?
Yes.
President, I'd like to, I brought up an issue about, I brought up an issue about creating virtual meetings, I mean, hybrid meetings, and I was asking if Jeff could give us the cost of what it would take to get that done.
Sure. Mr. Hastings, you could get that too, or do you have it? You don't have it? You can get it to Mr. Rogers or to the, actually Finance Committee, we can bring that up and talk about how much virtual and next finance, if we are going to do virtual and camera, I mean, taping at the same time.
I asked that to be addressed at this meeting.
Yeah, so the.
Oh, you have it? Oh, okay.
Thank you. The district was using WebEx as a service during the COVID time, where we broadcast the meeting virtually and it allowed for participation by the public, and the cost of that annually was about $4,500. Once we came back from the quarantining, we dropped that service so we could, again, start that service up. But when we did come back initially, we utilized our Microsoft Teams platform. The district uses Microsoft for its software, for email and other office-related products, and Teams, which is a virtual component of that, is included in the package that we use. So it allows for public comment, allows for live broadcast of the meetings, and we also have the second option for folks to go to a public comment email box. So if they did want to participate online, they could forward an email to the district, and we would read the email out at the meeting. So those are things we had used just when we came back from COVID.
Were there any services that we could use that were a non-expensive?
Sure. So the Microsoft Teams is part of our existing package. The district currently uses that for various meetings, and we used them for committee meetings last week. So that, again, could be set up if the board desires for a live broadcast.
Didn't we use them when a few of us had to attend virtually, right?
Yes, I remember having you here at my side once or twice.
I was at Disney in California, still attending the meeting.
So any comments from the board, whether they would like to try the dual in-person, virtual, or? Anybody? Mr. Remy, what's your thoughts here over there?
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's good on both sides for us and the community, so they can participate, see what's going on. But I believe, I think we're live now, right? I don't know.
Yeah, there is an organization doing this.
So the community can, you know, like, voice their concern.
Hmm? Excuse me, one second.
All right. Yeah.
So what is your, you like the idea or you?
Yeah, I like the idea.
Mr. Gerlo, do you like the idea of doing both?
Short answer, yeah. The main thing for me is cost. I mean, like, like Dr. Adams was saying, we're going through quite a bit. I think somebody on the meeting last week's or last month said something about sparing no expense, which I respectfully disagree with, because I think we need to look at the expenses. So, but if it's something that's already set and it's not going to require that much staff time to set up and everything else, then, you know, and my question is, would that have, would folks be able to participate, the folks that are watching the live stream, or is it just watching it?
No. When we're using the Team software, when we go to public participation, they could use the features to raise their hand or get into a queue for their question to be or statement to be acknowledged.
Okay, so they can participate. Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with it, and let's try it out again, and if we see that it becomes, you know, too much of a difficulty, then we can discontinue.
Want to make a suggestion? You want to try a trial run and see how it works? I don't know how quickly, it could be set up next month or the month after, which one would be best?
You can do it in February.
In February, we'll start a trial run with Microsoft and see how it works, and is there any agreement?
Meetings are advertised for the annual schedule, and then the website would have a link to the, either a call-in or a live link.
And the only other thing I would, I remember was, there was an email address that if people wanted to email their, you know, their questions or their comments or whatever, we could just stick that in there too, since it's.
Yes, that's still an active box, so we could have the link for the meeting and the link for the email inbox as well.
I think when we stopped using it, there was something like, there were only a handful of people that were using it, but, you know, let's try it out.
All right, I'd like to open it up in accordance with Board Policy 0167 for public, so we could have some public comment. And then we're going to close the meeting and open up again, because it's a little bit after seven, so we want to get started on the regular meeting. So if anybody has anything to say, please come to the mic and state your name and the town you reside in.
Hi, Debbie Lorenz. I reside in Asbury Park. My son is a student at the Asbury Park High School, seventh grade. I noticed that when I come to the meetings, I can get the ball rolling a little faster. I'm quite sure that there must have been some timeline that you had in mind. While it sounds like building and grounds are extremely busy people, I need that ball to roll faster. By the time my son gets to eighth grade, I want that life skills program so perfect that there's nothing missing. But I've noticed the ball kind of stopped rolling. Trips have been put in place, which has been great, although a bus issue last trip kind of set the trip into turmoil, but I need that ball to roll faster. There's nothing been done about the laundry room that is supposed to be built, except that the office has been, there's still no sink in the place where they're preparing food. The food preparation is the same exact program that they did last year, which is great. That was a fantastic start that that particular teacher had set up, but right now, that's still all that's happening. So we need more, and we need it faster, much faster. So I hope that you can adjust your timeline and get buildings and grounds on it, because I want to run like Indiana Jones with a giant folder chasing me, because that ball's rolling so fast. So thank you so much, and keep it up.
Thank you.
I invited the new people here tonight, so I wanted to make sure that you guys heard.
Thank you very much. Anybody else comment?
Mr. Hastings, can we just put that on the Buildings and Grounds Committee agenda? Just to get a report on that?
Sure, we can give you an update.
Great.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sharon Lederer. I'm a resident here at Asbury Park. I'm here to present you with an opportunity to partner with myself. I am a.
Can you speak in, I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic so we could?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I am here to give you an opportunity to partner with myself. I am the owner and operator of She Connects LLC, which is a networking and business support specialist. I have reached out to both the Bradley Elementary School and Thurgood Marshall School Principals, as well as Ms. Lysira Boston, the community coordinator, to partner with me in what is the 2023 National African American Read-In. I've given myself a challenge to coordinate as many Read-Ins as possible. This Read-In is given by the Black Caucus of the National Council of Teachers for English. It's been happening since 1990. I have already scheduled multiple organizations and houses of worship in this community and surrounding communities, and wanted to offer an extended invitation for the district to bring it into the schools as well. So if you are interested in partnering with me in that endeavor, I am here, I'll be here, whoever I need to talk to, I want to talk to them, so we can get the importance of literacy and our history into our school system. Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
My name is Cherry Ivory. I am an alumnus of Asbury Park High School, class of 1970. Currently, I heard yesterday that Asbury Park is slashing the Allied Health Program. That concerns me, because I've been a nurse for 50-plus years, and right now, nursing is something that is well-needed. To slash this program is a crime. I understand that there may be some financial constraints, but I also understand that there are community people that are willing to assist you. I am the president of the Concerned Black Nurses of Central New Jersey. I am the president of Region Six Nurses in the New Jersey State Nurses Association, and a proud member of the National Black Nurses Association. Amen. I'm a nurse, though. In my role, I have been charged with assisting young people, especially our young people of color, to get professions that will allow them to care for themselves and their families so they won't be burdensome on the system. I don't know why the program was slashed. We are willing to help. We've been around for many years. No one has ever reached out to us. I am imploring you that if you need teachers, we have teachers. I have taught on the baccalaureate level and the associate degree level and at the vocational school in Neptune. My organization has a number of nurses who can teach whatever you need. In my organization, we have over 300 years of experience in nursing. So if you need help, I'll leave my contact information so that you can reach out to us so that this program won't be slashed, and we can help these young people come along, because all of you sitting here, you're going to need somebody to take care of you. And you're going to need somebody to take care of you correctly, that understands what you have gone through. Thank you for your time, and please take my contact information. Who's going to do that? Okay, thank you so much.
Right over here. Thank you very much for coming up. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Asbury Park. My name is Nurse Nancy, and I am a nurse as well. I will be celebrating 20 years as a nurse on January 31st, my 50th birthday, but I'm not here for that. What I am here for, this is my very first time at an Asbury Park Board of Education meeting, you know, because I'm from Neptune, and it was an embarrassment, okay? What y'all did here was an embarrassment. What y'all did here is the reason why this Asbury Park cannot pass the basic skills test, okay? Y'all never passed the basic skills test, and the pandemic just made it even worse. If it was a 4% pass rate for basic skills, and this was before the pandemic, when they had teachers, what do you think was going to happen after the pandemic, when the kids was home? It got worse. What you did was sugarcoating. You didn't tell these parents who are sitting right here that their kids are failing miserably, because it's all over the Asbury Park press. The reason why y'all not getting funds is because they're scared that y'all going to rob them, like y'all been doing. What happened? Why did the class of 2022 did not receive their high school diploma? Could you just answer that? Which one of y'all don't know how to spell Joe? It was an embarrassment, and I stood for all those Asbury Park parents who was calling and wondering where was their child's diplomas at? Where was it at, Asbury? Was y'all doctoring it up, huh? Like y'all was doing the grades for the football team? Stop it, Asbury Park. Y'all are a bunch of crooks. Y'all not doing nothing. Not one of these kids here made the honor roll. Y'all talking about student of the month. Who gives a damn if Johnny came to school happy? We're here to learn. These teachers doing their best, that's what they getting paid for, that's what our tax dollars is paying them for, and obviously, if the students aren't passing, then the teachers aren't doing their best. I recommend the whole damn board be fired, all of them, and start fresh. You got. You got the football coach who run across the field half naked. You got the kids who don't get their high school diploma till the following year. Come on, Asbury, let's talk about it. Not one kid made the honor roll, and y'all praising Johnny because he happy because he come to school every day. Who cares? They're here to learn, but y'all don't look at it like that. What's y'all graduation rate? I could count on two hands how many people graduate from Asbury. You got kids that live in Asbury, and they go to charter. Who want to send their kids to a school and only 4% of the whole school pass? And y'all worried about football. Y'all worried about dumb stuff. I'm done here. I will never in life send my child to an Asbury Park school. And I got four of them, and all of them went to Neptune. I'm done here.
Thank you very much. Someone else? Ms. Kendall?
Don't worry. I'm Fabiana Kendall. I am the grandparent of a high school student. And I had come, and I have been on a mission for this whole week. I spoke to Mr. Ruiz outside, and I want to specifically say, Dr. Adams, I know we are not roughly fair haven, but I know we are. My granddaughter is working hard, but there's some things that's happening, and I'm just not comfortable with it. And I should say, when I spoke to somebody else before I spoke to Mr. Ruiz, I don't see, I don't, I'm not ranting and raving, but I know what stuff can look like on paper. Anything can come out and look great on paper. But my granddaughter is going to step out in the world as a young black woman. Black women have it harder. My granddaughter needs as much help as she can get. Now, don't get me wrong, somehow she's doing pretty good in the program that she's in, but I say that it could be better. And one of the things that I'm totally against is sitting in a classroom two days a week with absolutely no supervision. I think a fight might break out or something. I sure wouldn't want her to get hurt. That's one of my comments, and that's what I've just been on a mission about, like I said, my granddaughter. But there's one other thing I want to ask. Do we have two athletic directors? I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, okay. Now, I had come here once before last year and asked about the previous one. And I saw in the minutes that you hired a new one. That's all. But just out of curiosity, what is the old one doing? What is this new job?
That's a personal matter, so at this point--
Okay, but no, he's not the athletic director. He's a public, he's an employee.
He's here, he's employed, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, definitely.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? Just remember to speak into the mic, okay, so we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Deanna Perez. Hi, my name is Javiana Kenny, and we are seniors at the Asbury Park High School. We are here today because our principal, Ms. O'Neil, has come to decision to share our Allied Health Program. If you are unfamiliar, this is a program that allows students like us to take college courses for the nursery program while in high school. As a student, the closing of this program has a very big impact on us, all of us other students that's enrolled. I am very frustrated and disappointed in this decision, especially since we were reassured we would receive a new teacher since December 1st, and here it is late January. Now the program is completely cut. This amazing program was started years ago by wonderful lady, Ms. Goken. Unfortunately, she has left because of current administration. Several of us still keep in contact with her, and she treats us as her own children. She left the school, she had a whole plan for us, she believed in us. Imagine being a freshman in high school and then being told you can begin pursuing your careers right now. She knew the benefits of having college opportunities early on. In our community, we do not all have the luxury of college after high school. Some of us come from difficult home situation. This program give us the head start we need to keep up with our peers in other community.
I have been in this program for three years. I have dedicated so much time and energy staying on top of all my studies. My peers and I deserve the opportunity to complete what we started. We beg you, please do not allow this program to be shut down before you truly see the amazing things we accomplish with this hope.
Thank you for letting us speak.
Just so you--
Shiva Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park. Happy New Year. I hope everybody have a good New Year, is having a good New Year. I am here for, just because of you, but I don't know if I have not seen the curriculum. I was having a discussion, I went to a parent training last, on the 14th of January, we was talking about the cursive writing that was removed from the curriculum. I know it was done through the state, but some people have brought it back in their district. I was wondering if our district has this in the curriculum or can it be put back in the curriculum? From what I understand, you know, when you write with your hand, you get that practice when you left hand and right hand, so occupational therapy stuff, so can we do that? And well, my daughter graduated in June 22. She got her diploma like some months late, she got it in October, so she did get it in 2022, so she did get away with it just then. Another thing is, we talked about the assessments test, and I have been talking about this for years and years and years, being a product from coming from Alabama to school in New Jersey, you know, 10 years in Alabama, two years in New Jersey. And I always say, if you reach, from the second grade on, we changed classes. We had a different math teacher, we had a different spelling teacher, we had a different, you know, reading teacher, science teacher, because social studies teacher, because not all teachers can teach all subjects, like in New Jersey. Like, we had once a teacher, and they tried to teach all the subjects, but you could have another teacher that's better at teaching that subject, and people say it's inconvenient to move the kids, but don't move the kids, let the teachers move around from class to class. But I think the students would learn better and would perform better if we have different people teaching different subjects. I don't know how they would look with the money. And the last thing, it's disheartening when we have administrator that won't come out of office, have security that has to escort her every time she leave her office, then you have staff that's fighting, that gets suspended, but then they come back and have a job in September, and then you have gender reveal parties in the middle of the day for students, and then you have a parent that approached a student, a teacher. She did handle it wrong, she should have went to administrator, but then she get banned from every building in the district, but you still have these people to come back and have a job there doing these things that, you know, they shouldn't be done. And then I was, when I addressed it, somebody told me that, you know, people don't, we don't always punish people for punishment all the time, but they learn on what they do, but evidently, they do not learn. And as my grandma would say, our district is going to hell in a handbasket. So we need to handle this now, please, before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodson. Anybody else?
Hi, everybody, Carrie Butch, theasburyparkreporter.com. I just want to let you guys know that we are 150% in support of you guys doing hybrid meetings. So I thank you guys for doing the research, and I'm looking forward to you guys instituting it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nina Sumlin. I reside at 1101 Bangs Avenue. And I had a conversation with the superintendent not too long ago, and I'm just curious, like, we're into a new year now. Have you considered town hall meetings yet? For this year? Because I think it would actually be really important for our residents and our parents in this community to have these town hall meetings, so you don't wait for a board meeting to have to hear reports and everything else that's going on in the district. You'll hear prior to coming to these meetings, or at least the parents and the residents will understand what you guys are dealing with as a board and as a superintendent, of what you're actually dealing with on a day-to-day basis. And this will give them a better understanding of what to expect when you're coming to a board meeting, and what to expect, and what you're going to see, and what you're going to hear. The other thing is, I'd like to say, sorry, Ms. Last Month's Meeting. I am here to this meeting, I've been in the hospital for a while, but I want to kind of give the board an understanding of what a PTO for Bradley has done. What we actually did for the month of December, we partnered with Bradley Elementary School to make sure that all our children at the school receive Christmas gifts for Christmas free of charge, no paperwork that had to be signed by parents. Every kid got a free toy when they walked in the door. We've also partnered with Bradley Elementary School. They have an event coming up for February 16th. You guys will actually get an invitation to attend. It is a family night out, but I would like to make sure that at the next meeting, you guys will actually get info meeting in regards to a lot of things that are going on in your schools, from PTO to parent involvement to whatever. This way, you don't have to wait for a board meeting to find out what's going on outside of these doors at the end of the day. And I'd also like to say, congratulations to the new board members that are on for this year. And all I say is to a lot of you is make sure you really understand that you're here for our children, and we're not here just for representation or for credit on our belt, but we are here about our children and about the parents that actually send their children to this district, and how we can assist them and be able to move forward. And like I explained to the ladies here at the end, I am willing to help anybody. Anybody who knows me knows what I do and what I'm willing to put on the line when it comes to our children in this community. So I'm letting you guys know. Yeah, I may be walking around with an oxygen machine, but I'm definitely letting people know that I am here, and I'm ready to go hit the ground and start pissing a lot of people off this school year in order to get a lot of stuff done, not just with our parents and our kids, but within our community. Because if we don't keep our community involved in what's going on on a day-to-day basis, every time you come to one of these meetings, it's either going to be, well, nobody told me, I didn't know, or I didn't understand. And that's why I'm requesting not just the school district, but I've also asked City Hall, and I've also asked the Housing Authority to start doing town hall meetings to keep our community involved in what's really going on and what the best interest is in this community for our children. And I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodson. Someone else? Oh, our student representative is here. Do you have a report for us?
I was actually told not to speak tonight. I was going to say something, but I was told that it would be right. Hello?
Speak loudly.
Can you hear me now?
So when you were sitting here, somebody--
Okay, so I was told not to speak tonight, but I think that it would be right that I do, because the things that I bring up is something that needs to be heard by not just one person, but everyone in this room, because all of you have the ability to change the things that are happening in our school. As a Dream Academy student, I was excited to start my college classes in person. Being on campus for the first time a few weeks ago was something that me and everyone in cohorts 11 and 12 had been looking forward to since the effects of the pandemic had taken the opportunity from us. However, when we actually got there, our excitement changed. We were told to stay in one place while our class started. We cannot use facilities such as the fitness center, library, and other study areas. Being titled a college student should come with all of these things. We are trustworthy dual-enrolled students and should be treated as such. For the 11th grade cohort, we do not go to Brookdale Tuesdays and Thursdays. Instead, we stay in the classroom until dismissal in an Asbury Park High School classroom. I feel like our students should have the opportunity to go home, just like we did during break, because we are not doing anything in the classroom, and like someone said previously, we do not have supervision. Because of the loss of our Dream Academy program supervisor a few months ago, we have been left without anyone to oversee the program, which brings up other questions like who will be put in charge, and makes me question the future of the Dream Academy program. In other aspects of the school problems, programs such as Allied Health and Law Enforcement have been left without instructors, and students who have previously taken the courses are upset. Many of these students have worked for years to obtain certifications and skill sets that will impact them for the rest of their lives, and now they are sitting doing nothing. And as a student representative, I am also upset. We need more support for these programs. They used to be the highlight and the height of the Asbury Park High School. They are a stepping stone to the very important career options for all of our students. This school year and its environment is starting to feel different. All this tied to the circumstances listed previously. It all started with the alleged cancellation of our football season and then the homecoming. And now we are seeing a delayed start to our second semester, and I wonder if there is any way that we can avoid these problems.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Lyons, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Happy New Year to all of you, and today I had the opportunity to review our district's mission, as well as the school's vision. And it states our mission statement, and I'm sure you're familiar with it. Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone, everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. The word "everyone" jumped off the page. "Possess" jumped off the page. And I know our teachers, we thank you for all that you're doing, and your labor is not in vain, because there's one, two, three, or others of the student bodies who are looking at you, encouraged by you, and learning from you. What is our school vision? Our school's vision is to provide student-centered educational programs that challenge all students to perform at their highest potential. Our school prepares students for success in the 21st century by engaging them in rigorous and relevant learning opportunities that promote academic, physical, and emotional growth. Those are not light words. I know you know that. You have been strategically placed to have our children understand in the minute ability to move forward. They can succeed. And so these two writings, they have meaning. It's a mission that we will provide all students, that includes our special needs students. It seems like they're on the other side of the fence. We don't hear much about them, but they're included in the populace, the student populace. My purpose in reviewing, our purpose will ignite, I believe, a reset button. This is a new year. No, you don't stop everything, you have to continue. But I believe our passion needs to be reignited to come together and work together and seek the benefit from it. Yes, we are experiencing major setbacks, but we are better qualified to take the few pieces that remain and turn our district around, including our special needs and general education students. As I said, teachers, we thank you all, what you do, praying for you all that won't lose your passion, that you fulfill your chosen profession, and remember, your labor is not in vain, because there is at least one or two lives that will see you and be encouraged by you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Is there anybody else for a public session? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tom McGee. I'm a resident here in Asbury. I don't have any children in the district.
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Tom McGee here in Asbury. I had no intention to get up and discuss anything. I'm here to educate myself about the district and the challenges. I'm here to educate myself about the district and the challenges. What prompted me to come up here was that young lady who had the courage to face and look at adults in a position of responsibility. And she had the courage to do that, and she said one thing. She said, "Somebody told me not to come up here and talk." I'd like to know why none of you asked that young lady. If you could talk to her and follow up, because for that young girl to come up here and to have the courage to do that, I'm an adult and I'm nervous talking about it. I hope one of you takes it upon yourself. I don't know if you know her name, whatever, that's not a challenge, but you know, there's a lot of students.
She's our student representative, so I'm sure.
And again, I'm here to educate myself. I hope somebody follows up with her and answers her questions, and also talks to her about anybody trying to strengthen her young voice. So that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, no, no. I want you to play.
You're already up once. Is there anybody else that I'm going to? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Hamilton. I'm a fourth grade teacher at the Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School. I reside in Kingsbury, New Jersey, and this is my 24th year in Asbury. I wasn't going to come up here and speak tonight. I'm here for grievances and closed session. But when I sat and talked to Sarah, they asked me why she wasn't at the table, if you all want to know. One, there wasn't a seat for her. And second, her high school principal told her not, pulled her outside and told her not to discuss the things she wanted to bring up because it was too controversial. If you're going to have a student representative, let them speak their mind. She wasn't here to razzle anybody up, and she was, doesn't need to say, "We'll have a private meeting afterwards to discuss your issues." She didn't stand up and come up here because she didn't feel welcome. And I commend her bravery, and I commend the young men and women over here for the Allied Health Program. If you want to know why the Allied Health Program was canceled, dissolved, it's not a financial thing. Ask Ms. Gogan why she quit. Check out Neptune. I believe she did Neptune, started the program up there. So go to the source, ask her why she quit, and then make a decision and open up the program. But we should shame ourselves that we squashed one of the rising stars in Asbury, a Dream Scholar. We squashed her here tonight because she couldn't believe in the leadership until they told her not to talk. How embarrassing is that? So please, with the new board, let's move forward. Let's stop silencing our students because they say something that some people might not enjoy. If we want a big change here in Asbury Park, we need to let the public speak, we need to let the rest of the speak, and of all, let the students speak. That was embarrassing that one of our school leaders told her not to talk because it was too controversial. We should think about that seriously. Thank you.
Seeing there's no one else, I'm going to close the public participation. And I'm going to make a motion to close, somebody make a motion to close our workshop, and then we'll take a five-minute break. Can I have a motion to close? And a second?
Are we closing the public session, or are we closing?
Closing the workshop, and then we'll open up in five minutes.
Hold on, hold on. Before we close, I'd like to make a comment.
About?
I was very disheartened by some of the comments that were made today, and I would like to discuss it, and I'd like to know with some of these comments that were made, how are we going to address it? Right now, I spoke to the attorney. Some of these are not personnel issues, we can speak about it on this floor. So we're having students speaking. If we're having communities speaking, we need to address these concerns. If they're wrong, we need to make sure we correct what's going on. But right now, some issues on unsupervision, on the allied, which you just addressed, the life skills, we need some discussing about this.
We'll do that, sir. We'll close this meeting, and then we'll open our public and start the next public meeting, because we're way over our time right now for that. So if I could have a motion to close the workshop? And move it? All in favor? Aye. You want to take five minutes, or you want to go right into the regular meeting? All right. In accordance to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10... C-70 S-2. The Asbury Park Board of Education provided accurate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of the meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the new coaster on January 11th, 2022, via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed in the administration building, Bulden Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, the Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 11th, 2022. Our mission statement is, "The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education, where everybody possesses the skills and character to succeed in diverse and evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call.
Mr. Grillin. Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Dr. Hennan.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Ms. Ricks.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Saunders. Salzberg. Ms. Cook.
Stand for the flag, please. Go ahead.
Good evening. So there are a couple of things that I want to address that were brought up in public comments section. As I mentioned earlier, we are not dissolving or getting rid of the Allied Health Program. We have been actively seeking and interviewing candidates to fill the role of the vacancy from the former employee. I'm happy that the woman came up and introduced herself and provided us with her organization's name, which was provided to our HR director, which we're going to follow up, just in case the candidate that we did interview declines the position. As to the students that are in the Allied Health Program, I was around when we first started, so I understand the importance of that program and continuing it in its full existence for not only this class of students, but the others. It is unfortunate that the staff member left before the year was out, which any employee has that right to do. However, we have been cognizant of the fact that those students still need services and instruction. We have a process whereby we have to advertise, excuse me, we have to post it, approve the posting, have the window open for the posting, interview for the posting, then recommend that that individual be board-approved, and then that person starts. So there is a process by which we have to legally adhere to, and it is not an overnight process. As far as the Dream Students being in the library, the issue is Brookdale has determined that the students could not come on campus. That is not a decision determined by Asbury Park School District. In terms of the supervision, I will look into that. In terms of those students not having adequate supervision, I can't respond to something that I don't know. If they are, then we will make every effort to correct that. The other issue regarding Sarah, I had a meeting today with the Student Advisory Committee. Sarah was on that Zoom call this afternoon, where there were a variety of things discussed. Sarah's concern, which she voiced regarding traveling to Brookdale and being treated as a college student, again, those are issues that are not anything that we can control in terms of Brookdale's situation regarding students going on campus. Have we dealt with busing situations? Yes, we have. Have we dealt with them sending smaller buses in order to have all of our students go? We've been dealing with a variety of those things. However, I will look into that to determine what is the nature of the reason why Brookdale is still not only allowing seniors to go on campus. So I wanted to definitely address those issues. Any other issues regarding personnel? I'm not going to discuss that, nor am I going to get into a conversation and publicly mention a leader in this district, because then that's making public comments, which again, we should be mindful of. And I'll just leave it at that. Because I just think that there is a professional way to conduct yourself, there's a professional way to convey your dismay without publicly shaming a staff member and someone who is also here working on behalf of the students. I would not do that to an instructional staff member, nor would I do that to a leader in this district. Publicly, that is one thing. Privately, that's a horse of a different color. And I think we need to practice better decorum in that manner, and no one is an exception above that.
I have a question. I'm sorry. Can we make sure that next time, starting next meeting, that Sarah has a place at the table here? Because she was here, she was here when the meeting started. I don't know exactly what happened, and I really don't care who told her what, but I think a student rep, it being best practices, I think, and it being a new law, and we're still trying to figure out what.
And we have two student reps as well.
Right, yeah, yeah. We have two.
We'll sit a couple chairs next to you.
Can we, can we just have a place for the student rep at the table, so they're treated as an equal?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Also, another question. The late start to the second semester, what was that comment about?
The late start to the second semester deals with the courses. I believe that the staff was already notified of that. The second semester will start on Monday. I think they're extending it until Friday, dealing with grades, but I will get that clarity and provide that information.
Do we usually get updates on that?
Updates to what?
Something significant like that.
Schedules, adjustments? No, that's not something that the board normally gets. That's an operational.
It's an operation, but it seemed to be dysfunctional that most of these...
Dysfunctional, the schedules, the schedules for student and operations are altered all the time. So, and I wanted us to be very mindful of our wording, dysfunction, chaos. Again, those are things that are detrimental when we start talking about retaining students in this district. We are in a public meeting, we're talking about our functioning as a district, we have someone come up to the microphone from Neptune and land-based us, and then walk out as if it is okay. There's a level of dignity and pride that has to be established, as well as, again, going back to decorum. Now, I'm not lecturing anyone, but every time somebody gets to that microphone and slams Asbury Park, that impacts our ability to retain students, that impacts our ability to retain funds, that impacts our ability to tell our story. So we need to be mindful and protect the sanctity of our district when people come up and are saying things that are in the detriment of the students and the hard-working staff. And I don't care whether they have disagreements with myself and other associations. At the end of the day, we can disagree, and we have to be role models for the students in all things and at all times. How we come to the microphone, how we voice our displeasure, how we celebrate, because I didn't see anybody booing when we were celebrating staff and students earlier. But the crab-in-the-cup mentality when the microphone comes to public session is a disgrace. And for the first time, I'm going to say it needs to stop, because it is deplorable.
I'd like to trust that. Superintendent, I'm hoping we don't remind ourselves that as role models, we have to align ourselves with what's going on in this district. And yes, some of the ways that people are expressing themselves may be deplorable, but we want, we need to get information. If not being given, they feel that they need to voice their opinion. We want to get a respectable approach to that, but we want an open and honest dialogue. And people want to have answers, we need to get these things done so we can fix this district, because we have fantastic kids, we have fantastic staff, our facilities are improving, but we have to work at getting this done.
With all due respect...
I've been here a long time. I don't want to say how long, because it's been way too long. And that mic has always been open, and people have been able to say what they have to say, and they were never told not to. And I don't think that this board, or the administration, or anybody here, would say they don't want somebody to come to that mic and say what they need to say or ask questions. So I don't know how people feel if you're saying somebody feels they can't. This has never been a place where people cannot come and speak their mind. People always have. So I'm not sure where that's coming from. So, just so you know.
With all due respect, Board Member Rogers, transparency is one of the things that I have provided to this board since I've stepped into this seat. And I will continue to do that. So the misnomer that somehow there's a cloak of deception in the operation and the function of this district is flat-out untrue. The clarity and the rules and the expectation regarding personnel, those things will never be discussed in public session. The decisions and the operation of this district reside and rest with my professional experience and expertise. The governance, I will always defer to the board. The governance, I will always defer to the board. The governance, I will always defer to the board. But the operation and the execution of the operation and the professional expertise of the staff will always reside at the seat of the superintendent, and I take that role and responsibility very seriously. So when we get into the governance of what the operation of this district, then I will acquiesce to the board each and every time. Each and every time. But understand, this fight does not just rest at the seat of the superintendent, nor the board. The fight to improve this district takes a holistic approach, and there has been full transparency since I've been sitting in this seat. And accountability, not only for myself, who I hold myself to a very high standard, but that standard does not escape me, and no one is above reproach. No one.
Can I make a quick suggestion?
Hold on one second. Let me, we're going to go in exact, let me read this. "Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters, as outlined, as I'm going to say, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now be it resolved at January 26, 2023, Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes of client attorney privilege and personnel matters..."